Until further instructions. Can I remind everybody to ensure that their mobile phones and iPads are set to silence? We will now move to the formal part of the agenda. Agenda item one, Emily, apologies for absence and replacement councillors.
Thank you, Chairman, we've not received any apologies today.
Thank you very much indeed. Item two, declarations of councillors' interests. Do any members have to declare any interests? Bear in mind that you can declare as you go through the meeting. Note, item three, minutes to the meeting held on the 30th of November. This item is to approve and sign the minutes to the last meeting as a correct record. I'm going to go through the minutes now page by page. Page five. Page six. Page seven. Page eight. Page nine. Page 10. Page 11. Page 12. Page 13 and the last page, page 14. Do I have a proposer and seconder that they are a true record of the minutes held on the meeting on the 30th of November 2021? Martin, Vice Chairman, propose seconder, councillor Fleetwood. All those in favour, please raise their hand. That's carried, any others against? Any abstentions? Councillor Baxter noted, thank you. Thank you for those minutes, well agreed and we will be an accurate record and will be signed by me following this meeting. The first item is announcements by the chairman, executive councillors and lead officers. I have no announcements today. I'm now going to call on the executive councillor, councillor Colin Davy, who's joining us by Zoom for his announcements. Good morning, councillor Davy.
Good morning, Chairman, good morning, members and a very happy new year to you all. And let's hope it's a successful one for the UK and for Lincolnshire in particular. I think firstly, Chairman, I'd like to just touch on the forthcoming White Paper, which is going to be very timely and shining a light on the government's policies and measures to support the levelling up of the UK and ways to restore pride, regenerate places and deliver economic growth and opportunity across the country and across Greater Lincolnshire. I am determined that we will maximise these opportunities for Greater Lincolnshire and I have tasked officers to ensure that we are ready and fully prepared for the White Paper that is expected at the end of this month. In the context of this, officers are working with stakeholders to gather intelligence to place us in the best possible position of preparedness to access the funding and the investment to help realise our full economic potential. I know that members of this committee who have supported this work will want to continue to do so. We are clear, we want to see impactful investments where the whole Greater Lincolnshire area benefits and projects that the government can support and that we all can champion. In addition to this, levelling up for Greater Lincolnshire agenda will also mean a future where we continue to work ever more at a Greater Lincolnshire level and we hope to see announcements through the White Paper that enable this to not just be so but to make real differences going forward. I'd like to now turn directly to business. I'm pleased to report that gross domestic product, or GDP, grew by 0.9% in November, putting total UK GDP above pre-COVID levels for the first time since the pandemic began. This was largely driven by strong growth in construction, 3.5%, transport and storage at 3.8% and professional scientific and technical activities at 2.5%. However, it's worth noting, construction and production sectors remain 1.3% and 2.6% below pre-pandemic levels respectively. Business owners locally do continue to highlight significant challenges around increasing costs, recruitment and supply chain issues. It's my belief that the supply chain issues may worsen before they improve due to the continuing problems with COVID in China, which is seeing ports being placed back into lockdown and manufacturing stalling. So I think there are more challenges ahead in this area. As the county council, however, we continue to offer significant level of support across the sector and I'm going to share a few headlines with you now. We have now finalised the last contracts for the Invest For Future Fund, resulting in 32 businesses receiving commitment of 1.6 million of grant funding as part of our COVID Recovery Fund. 621,856 of this fund has already been released to projects. Aligned to this, the Royal Business Grant continues to support 112 businesses with 1.3 million a grant having been released to date. This money is making real differences to businesses on the ground in our county and I'm delighted to hear of the impact that the money is having across many sectors, from health and wellbeing to land-based businesses to the visitor economy. The new website to support businesses in the visitor economy has got off to a very strong start, having been launched at the end of November. The web address, business dot visitlincolnshire dot com, is aimed at helping visitor economy businesses with their digital and business skills. I would ask members of this committee to champion it and to share it with businesses that they work with. The website features over 60 masterclass videos, fact sheets, downloadable templates, all of which are presented in a jargon, free in every way possible for local government speak. The customer focus, www visitlincolnshire dot com, continues to grow and it now comes top or second in most searches. It saw huge activity in the week after Christmas as people searched for coastal holidays. It sees visitors from across the UK with a healthy 14% coming from the London area. It is delivering business and is successfully increasing its audience around 40,000 a month. The average conversion rate is 15% across all content. It has enormous potential for our further product development work, particularly business tourism, green tourism, cycling, walking and birdwatch. These are the potential high-value visitors we need and very valuable to our businesses for their growth plans. I am very pleased to report that we are continuing to see many businesses flourish in our county and many new businesses wishing to come here to grow further. I have touched on this before, but I will repeat and update today that since April 21, we have received 82 inward investment inquiries, with 66 of those being from foreign investors. They are from a diverse range of sectors, with 36 being from the angry food sector and officers are supporting a significant number with supporting finding suitable sites. I am very delighted to say that many of those businesses who are here continue to see the value of working together for Greater Lincolnshire through Team Lincolnshire. We now have 137 Team Lincolnshire ambassadors. Recently, we have been joined by Global Berry, Ambitions Personnel, Lives, VPI Immingham, Philip's 66 and Lloyd's Bank, who have all joined Team Lincolnshire. Officers at the Business Lincolnshire Growth Hub continue to provide vital support to a whole range of businesses. In quarter three, 343 businesses have been supported with support through the LCC COVID Grants and uptake of some of our specialist support programmes, such as our Supply Chain Programme and Manufacturing Transformation Programme. And there are now 10 peer networks in delivery, with a further two ready to kick off. Our businesses always tell us that well-trained and highly skilled staff are their most vital resource. Our adult learning team continues to help build skills across the county. The 2020-21 data is now finalised and in total, 1,395 courses were delivered to 535 learners across our county. Since the 1st of August, we have delivered 641 courses to 2,197 learners. There has been and continues to be an increase in the number of qualifications undertaken. 108 qualification courses have been delivered so far this academic year in subjects such as English, maths, bookkeeping, customer service, payroll, food production and food preparation, which supports Lincolnshire's priority employment sectors and helps to provide the skills and learning to equip our learners for work. It's worth mentioning, Chairman, that this morning the government has confirmed there are now 1.4 million vacancies in the UK labour market, I think the highest number on record. So it is clear that businesses will still have trouble recruiting the staff they need. I'd just like to now move on and talk on a couple of environment issues. Firstly, members will be aware, we've had a two-year programme through our budget process to support floodworks in our communities, mainly the most difficult ones to actually find national funding for, and that programme has been very successful as we've moved around the county targeting some of those areas. I'm very pleased to report the executive has agreed and it will be in the budget going forward for the next two years, a further 1.5 million pounds, so we can target further work in our communities to deal with some of these long-ranging flood issues. And my final comment this morning, Chairman, relates to a matter that members will be aware of through previous committee reporting around the desire by the district council to extend coastal caravan site opening for a much longer season. Obviously, the EEA and ourselves had a different view to that. The Secretary of State last night ruled on this matter on three of those applications and he has refused them and there are some 30 other applications in the planning process awaiting determination. I would just like to comment by reading the leader of the council's media statement on this matter. We're clear within the county council that there are ways to help coastal areas thrive with the right investment and visitor attractions all year round. However, this has to be done with the safety and best interests of residents as a priority. We're therefore pleased that the decision to refuse these applications has been taken. It acknowledges the risk and consequence of coastal flooding. We are in agreement and supportive of the Environment Agency and Lincolnshire's resilience for them, that the applications would have presented a risk to life if progressed. Emergency services are under extreme pressure when flooding occurs and it would be irresponsible to encourage additional people to live in caravans during the winter storm season, both for their own welfare and the welfare of existing residents. As a member of the partnership charged with long-term coastal management, for East Lindsay District Council to pursue this idea without briefing or consulting its partners and residents was fundamentally wrong. Hopefully, these reviews will send a strong message that this is not a course of action that is safe or desirable to pursue. And finally, on this matter, the Secretary of State has also ordered a full public inquiry into East Lindsay District Council's desire to extend the season through caravan site licensing regulations. At that point, Chairman, I will stop and if there are any questions, I'll be happy to take them.
Thank you very much indeed, councillor Davy. That was a really positive message and a really good start for 2022. It's good to see that there's so many people really interested in investing and coming to Lincolnshire to work. I'm going to open up now to questions. Councillor Baxter, do you have a question?
Yes, I have a couple, thank you, Chair. First of all, a point of personal explanation, we're all trying to cut our carbon emissions and as I think you know, I try to come to these meetings by train. And as I think you know, the train arrives at 10.2 and I have to skate up the hill to get here. So I'm a bit disappointed that you started the meeting while I was freshening myself up, should I say, when you could just as easily have waited the two minutes.
I was just coming there, councillor Baxter, the meeting starts at 10 o'clock and as you know, I'm keen to be punctual, 10 o'clock is the start time, but I accept you have train travel to get here.
Yeah, if you'd rather me get, drive up and cause all those emissions so that I can be an extra five minutes early, then that's fine. But I think that climate change is going to need, that we all need, is going to mean that we all need to adapt and I think adapting this meeting to allow me to get back from the loo is not unreasonable. As for the comments by the cabinet member, thank you to the cabinet member for coming along and he read that very well. Would it be possible in future to share the information that he's going to read to us beforehand so that we can have a glance at it and take it in? Because there's an awful lot of information, I think, getting on for 15 minutes of councillor Davy speaking, so it's difficult to take in all the facts and the figures and the information and the progress in such a way. That would be most welcome next time. And while you were going through the minutes before I arrived, I don't know if anybody picked up on the officers had promised to share data on recycling rates by district. I don't know if councillor Davy can say whether or not that information is available. And finally, at the last meeting, we mentioned solar developments and we were told that before the county council responds to the consultation on the various solar developments proposals in the county, that we would all be given a chance to comment. Can I assume that the council hasn't commented so far on any of the five planned solar developments? Thank you.
If I go back to your first comment regarding the, you made a valid point, I think, about if there's long presentation should be given out beforehand, but I understand that some of councillor Davy's presentation was only last minute, so he didn't have the time to do that, but I'll go back to councillor Davy, see if he can answer your questions. Councillor Davy.
Firstly, on information, I'm quite happy and I try and do a regular economic newsletter to councillors, I will try and include all of this data that we have in those economic newsletters, so members see it either in advance of the meeting or they have a formal written record of it through a report to members. So I've got no problem sharing information with members and that's the whole point of me coming to this meeting is to share information with the members of the council. In terms of the solar applications, no, we have not formally responded to any of the applications yet. It is a long, drawn-out process, we're only at the beginning of the end set process at the moment. So we are currently commissioning some work to look at the carbon balancing argument between development versus the cost of installing solar and when we have some data to share, we'll share that with members. But it is a long process and the formal response of the county council will probably be some months away on these applications. So I hope that answers councillor Baxter's question.
Thank you very much indeed, councillor Davy. Are there any further questions for councillor Davy? No, I shall now move on to the officers, senior officers.
Chairman, can I just interrupt you slightly?
Do apologise, yes.
I'd like to just pull you back to the minutes and in the minutes, it states that I was, put my apologies into the meeting. I've formally seconded this meeting, I would request that you asked for a further seconder because it would seem that I wasn't at this meeting. I've checked my diary to see where I was and the diary, and the meeting does sound familiar to me, but just on a technicality, I think it'd be wise to have a different seconder.
Yes, thank you, councillor Fleetwood. I'm just going to check with Emily, are we in order to rerun the agreeing of the minutes if there's been a technicality arose?
Yeah, we can do, but just to confirm, you are able to second them and agree them if you weren't there?
Right, thank you. I shall rerun that then, so if I then go back to the... Right, I understand you can formally second that, so that's fine. Vanessa, any updates for the committee?
Nothing from me, thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much indeed. We'll move on to item five, the Revenue and Capital Budget Proposals 2022/23. This item is on pages 15 to 22 of the agenda pack and enables the committee to consider and comment on the budget proposals for the council's Environment and Economic Services prior to the decision being taken by the executive at the meeting on the 8th of February 2022 on the budget proposals for 2022. This report will be presented by Keith Doland, Head of Finances. The actions are, the committee is invited to consider this report and provide comments on the budget proposals for the consideration by the executive at this meeting on the 8th of February 2022. Over to you, Keith.
Thank you and good morning. As the chairman's already said, this report presents the budget proposals for the next financial year for Environment and Economy Services, for pre-decision scrutiny ahead of the executive determining the final proposals at their meeting on the 8th of February. On pages 15 to 17 of the pack, I provided the context in terms of the 2021 spending review and the provisional local government settlement. I think it's fair to say that not a lot of that is directly relevant to economy and environment, but it does provide this background for the overall council financial position. There's still no clarity on the implementation of local government funding reforms, so we're again presenting budget proposals for just a single year. The executive approved the budget proposals for consultation at their meeting on the 5th of January. That includes a proposed 3% increase in council tax, which is the 3% adult social care precept deferred from last year. The proposed revenue budgets are presented in table A at the bottom of page 18 of your pack. The table shows the movements from the current year's budgets in terms of unavoidable cost pressures and expected savings. It does exclude pay inflation, which has been budgeted for at 2%, but is currently being held centrally pending agreements of any pay award. As you'll see from the table, there isn't a great deal of change proposed from the current budgets for these services. There's a £200,000 cost pressure in the countryside service, which arises from the increased cost of maintenance of public rights of way fuelled by materials and labour price inflation. And there's also a saving of £365,000 in waste services from the efficiencies from the continued rollout of separated wastepaper and card collections. Turning to capital budgets, table B on page 20 sets out the proposed capital programme. Again, there's very little change from the current programme, other than some rephasing of expenditure. As councillor Davy mentioned earlier, the capital programme is currently supplemented by funding from the Development Fund, around £2 million, having been approved in the 2021 budget to increase capacity to carry out drainage and investigation and repair work. That scheme was due to end in the current financial year, but is now proposed to be extended for another two years, using 1.4 million pounds, which remained unallocated in the Development Fund. Just touching on timescales for the rest of the budget process, a consultation meeting with local business representatives, trade unions and other partners is scheduled for the 28th of January. The proposals are now live on Let's Talk Lincolnshire with the opportunity for the public to comment and the executive will make its final proposals on the 8th of February, which will then be considered by full council on the 18th of February. Hopefully, that summarises the main points. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much indeed, Keith. I'm now going to invite members of the committee to comment on this item. Councillor Greggs, do we have any questions? Councillor Baxter.
Thank you, Chair. This item obviously reflects the tremendous pressure that the nation's finances and the county's finances are under. I wondered if I could pick up on the comments about the rollout of the separated wastepaper, so paragraph 1.13, 1.13. We talk about rolling out the separated wastepaper and card. Can I understand, I'm certainly not arguing against it, but as I understand it, that applies to one or two waste collection authorities which we are partnering with. I wondered what will be happening to the food waste rollout in South Cisteven, which I understand is also quite successful and has been quite good at creating more efficient processing, as mentioned in 1.13. So first of all, what are we actually paying for with the rollout of the wastepaper and card? Are we extending the scheme? And secondly, what are our aspirations and intentions with regard to food waste? Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Baxter. I think there may be a question for councillor McNally. Councillor McNally, are you able to answer this question? Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. The paper and card rollout will be going to every district, I think it's West Lindsay next, East Lindsay, South Cisteven, City of Lincoln and South Holland, and that will be done in six-month cycles. As for SK with the food waste trial, the, obviously, everyone is waiting for the Environment Bill to come into force and just, just actually see what the requirements are for that, but it is something we will be doing in future.
Do you wish to come back, councillor Baxter?
Yes, please. That's great news. Very much welcome the rollout of the paper and card and if we could have a, if you could write that schedule or if somebody could write that schedule so we can see what comes where, that would be most welcome. So with the food waste, are we carrying on as we are at the moment in terms of funding from the county to the district or are we ceasing it? Yeah, are we carrying on as we are at the moment until we know or are we ceasing it altogether?
Thank you, councillor Baxter. Councillor McNally?
Good question. The, obviously, SKDC were specifically doing a trial for the food waste. I am under the impression that actually that might be stopping in the future, I'm not sure, until the Environment Bill is fully implemented. And I mean, there'll be, everyone will be looking at savings throughout the county rather than doing it on a separate basis, working throughout with the whole district. So if they've got to buy separate food collection vehicles, you know, they can all work together rather than just add one unit.
Thank you. I'm going to call in Mike Reed, head of Waste Collection, he may be able to answer your question, councillor Baxter. Mike Reed, good morning.
Morning, Mr. Chairman. Morning, everyone. The funding for the food waste trial, well, it's actually ceased being a trial quite a while back, but the food waste minor collection and disposal process which has been taking place in South Cisteven, the funding is still there. However, we are aware that they have pressures within the district on whether they can obtain the vehicles in renewing their fleet to be able to carry on that process. So we've had discussions and we're not sure if that will continue. However, the Environment Act, which has now been through Parliament and will be a requirement, will require us to have complete, separate food waste collections across the country and that's something that we're starting to develop at the moment as a project. We're looking at how this could get rolled out because food waste being separately collected and disposed of will be a significant issue and it'd be a big challenge for us to overcome, but that will be across the whole country. So all of our seven districts will have that requirement and it's something that we are working very closely with each district individually and as a group to kind of try and meet that because the initial plan from DEFRA was to have this implemented in 2023/24. We're still waiting for the clarity on timing and also funding of this, but it's quite certain that this will happen. So irrespective of what's happening in South Cisteven and their individual pressures, I think it's fair to say that food waste is going to be separately collected and disposed of in the next three to four years. I hope that has answered councillor Baxter's question. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Steve, Mike. And councillor Baxter, I know this subject is really close to your heart, so I will endeavour as soon as we can to get this onto a future agenda so we can debate it even more when we get more information. Are you happy with that?
Yeah, obviously disappointed that we seem unclear whether or not the food waste collection is going to continue in South Cisteven. I don't know if councillor Linda Wootton can comment from her point of view as a cabinet member at SKDC as to whether or not she knows the intention from SKDC.
We are talking, we are here at the county council, not the South Cisteven District Council, so...
Yes, and we are, we are talking about waste collection in Lincolnshire.
I said to you that I will endeavour to get this on a future meeting and I will do so. Councillor Linda Wootton, do you wish to come in? You don't have to.
Thank you, Chairman. It is, as been described both by councillor McNally and the other gentleman, it's just as they've described.
Thank you, thank you. I'm going to make progress now. Any further questions from any members? Councillor Bowles?
Thank you, Chairman. It's just on the table A on page 18, with the removal of the Development Management Budget, I'm just seeking a bit more clarity about what that means in real terms, what services will stop being delivered, what's the practical, you know, impact of that, if I could have a bit more information, please.
Sorry, I missed it. Did you say point wide on page 18?
Table A on 18, it's regarding the Development Management Reduction of Table A on eighteen, it's regarding the development management reduction of budget.
Right, thank you. Councillor McDally, are you able to answer that question? Because I can't.
Could I add a point of clarification on that, please, Mr. Chairman?
Keith, are you able to answer that question?
Yeah, if I could just clarify, that's not actually a budget reduction, it's a net budget. So it's a budget that receives income from development contributions from developers. And therefore, the income received exceeds the cost of providing that service. Therefore, it's a negative budget. It's not actually a reduction in budget year on year.
Thank you. Councillor Bowles, are you happy with that answer? Thank you very much. Any further questions from members? No, I'm going to go to the proposal and I'd wish to say thank you to Keith and Mike for coming to answer the questions. The proposal is that I move that we receive the report and that our comments, as recorded, are shared with the executive at the meeting on the eighth of February. Are we all happy? Are we all agreed? That's carried. Thank you very much indeed. Thank you. We move now to item six on the agenda, which is the Lincolnshire Carbon Tool. This item is on pages twenty three to thirty two of the agenda pack. And this item provides details of the Lincolnshire Carbon Tool, which was commissioned to determine carbon emissions for the whole economy in Lincolnshire County Council area. This report will be presented by Dan Clayton, Sustainability Manager. And the actions of this report are the committee is invited to consider and comment on the work that has been done to quantify the carbon dioxide emissions across the county and support the work that is underway to reduce these emissions. Over to you, Dan.
Thank you, Chairman. Yeah, so as the introduction said, we've got a target to reduce carbon emissions to net zero by twenty fifty. And we've been making good progress on reducing the county council's own direct emissions through our buildings and the fleet that we run and all those types of things. But we didn't have a good picture of the carbon emissions from the wider economy across the whole of the county council area. So we commissioned consultancy called E2 to look at what those emissions were. And they used a couple of methodologies which have been used nationally, one that the Department for Business, Energy and Industrial Strategy use in their annual reporting on carbon. And then there's the Tyndale Centre for Climate Change. They produce a carbon dioxide output figure and they use both of those methodologies to come up with the emissions. So when we go through the paper, we've looked at, you know, the timing of when we make the reductions in carbon because we can kind of front load the emission reductions in the sort of next decade, or we could put them into the twenty forties. And depending on how we do that, that has a significant impact on the overall climate emissions around the country. So if everybody kind of left them till the twenty forties, the country as a whole would go over its climate, carbon budget for the period up to twenty fifty. So we've looked at ways that we might front load those carbon emission reductions over the next sort of ten, fifteen years. And what the report from E2 has shown is that the total carbon, estimated carbon dioxide emissions for the period two thousand eighteen nineteen, they didn't do it in the sort of start of the pandemic year, they did it for the most recent data that was available before that. And it showed that the total emissions were three point five seven million tonnes across the Lincolnshire economy. And that was split, as can be seen in figure two. It was the largest emissions were from the transport sector at just under forty percent. And then round about thirty percent was from business and commerce, and another thirty percent was from domestic housing. So each of those sectors represents particular challenges and how we might make emission reductions. And I've got some comments later on on the actions that we're taking in each of those sectors to reduce carbon emissions through investments that the councils made and projects that we're starting to run. But we also had some data on emissions by sector over time, so that's in figure three in the report. And it shows that for most sectors of the economy, emissions have been steadily reducing over the period since two thousand and five. So domestic housing has been a reduction there of, you know, a significant reduction of about a third. And this has been achieved because the electricity grid has decarbonised, there's been a switch from coal fired power stations to gas fired power stations which have lower carbon emissions, plus the amount of renewable energy generated in the country has increased over that time. So anything that uses larger amounts of electricity, those sectors have tended to decrease. The area where emissions have stayed fairly constant is in transport. And this is because although vehicle engines have become more efficient over the last twenty years, people tending to drive more, there's more mileage and also because of the amount of home deliveries that people now get through internet purchasing, the number of vans that we have on our roads in the county has increased by about seventy percent since two thousand. And because there's more and more switch to internet shopping, that's expected to double over the next ten years as well. Again, from that, from the current level. So transport emissions have stayed pretty static over the period from two thousand and five to two thousand and nineteen. And then I looked in the continuing graphs, in figure four, that shows how emissions of, total emissions for the county have reduced. And you can see from there, they've gone from six million tonnes in two thousand and five to sort of four and a half million tonnes in the latest year. That's from the, that's from the base estimates of carbon dioxide emissions by county. So it has been a significant reduction that's occurred anyway. But I think what's happened so far is the kind of, the low hanging fruit has been taken. And the next round of emissions will be more problematic to introduce. And then I've looked at it then by district council area, and that's largely governed by population of each area. But one thing that it does show is that Lincoln and Boston, that are district councils that are mainly urban, have much lower transport related emissions because the residents are having to travel significant different distances to access services. So emissions there tend to be lower on a per capita basis, and that's backed up in the subsequent charts from sort of figure six, which shows the per capita emissions. And it shows that all districts of the county have had falling emission levels. But Boston and Lincoln were significantly lower because of this transport issue. So, and I've kind of presented them in a normalised version as well. So you can see there that every district has made emission reductions of at least thirty percent. This is for the total economy in each district as well, over the period since two thousand and five. So, you know, that's significant progress, but we now need to do the next set of actions. And then I've looked at the three main sectors that are producing carbon emissions. So in the transport sector, emission reductions in this area are going to be largely driven by national government policy. So things like the talk of stopping the sale of fully diesel and fully petrol cars from twenty thirty. So you'll only be able to buy electric vehicles or hybrid vehicles from that point. So that will have a significant reduction in emissions as that policy works through. And of course, the increasing use, sale of electric vehicles currently as well. What the council has done is commissioned a report on electric vehicle infrastructure, which WSP produces part of the local transport plan reporting. And that kind of sets out the infrastructure requirements that are needed and the number of charge points that are expected to be required over the next sort of twenty years or so, which I think totals around about nine thousand charge points around the county. And then in the industrial and commercial sector, we're starting to develop this idea of a Lincolnshire Climate Partnership. So we're looking at some funding options for how we can help businesses to introduce energy efficiency technologies into their business premises. So we've kind of dipped our toe in the water in the past with some of the funding pots we've had to do things like switching lighting to LED, improving insulation levels, installing solar panels, those sort of technologies. And there's a couple of options that we've been trying to work up into larger project to look at how that can be produced. And then the government policy, again, on the future building standard, that comes in from twenty twenty five. And the building regs are going to be tightened as part of that. So any new commercial industrial buildings that are constructed after that date will have to have significantly improved emission standards. And then in the domestic sector, the county council has helped to set up the Greater Lincolnshire Energy Efficiency Network, GLEEN. And what that group does is coordinate the activity on energy efficiency funding, which has mainly been directed at social housing. Also in the domestic sector, as with the commercial sector, there's the new Future Home Standard, which is going to start from twenty twenty five. And that significantly increases the building standards for new houses, and that's reflected in the new Central Lincolnshire Local Plan. And I expect that as the other local plans of the county are updated, they will reflect that change as well. And then there's the central government support through the Local Authority Delivery Scheme. This is for installing insulation upgrades for domestic properties. And Lincolnshire's been allocated some funding through the Midlands Energy Hub to upgrade houses through that scheme. And it's mainly, or it is totally aimed at social housing to start with. But there's an expectation that there'll be a new Green Homes Grant scheme, that, a new version of that coming up in the next few months, hopefully, to start to tackle some of these issues around energy pricing increases. And then the other issue with reducing carbon emissions in domestic properties is having a skilled workforce available locally that's capable of doing this insulation work. And we've been talking to the local colleges about, you know, courses that they need to run to try and introduce these sort of energy efficiency upgrades in properties. So having that workforce available to undertake this work. So, yeah, so that's the overall report. And the kind of conclusion is that we've made excellent progress in reducing our own carbon emissions. But we've got to recognise that the county council is only directly responsible for less than half of one percent of the carbon emissions in the county. So we're going to have to work with businesses and local communities and other parts of the public sector to reduce emissions over the next sort of ten, twenty, thirty years. So, yeah, thank you, Chairman. That's the report.
Thank you very much indeed, Dan. Before I open up to members for questions, I'd like to ask you a question first, Dan. You mentioned on page twenty six in your report about seven percent increase in van delivery drivers. When you bear in mind that each van may do twenty different drops, do you think it's a positive thing that people are doing shopping by order? Or rather than going to the shops themselves because it gets their vehicles off the road? Thank you.
Yeah, I think, I think that's right. It does, there is that. But, you know, if a van's doing multiple deliveries, then that obviously does help. I think the real benefit will be if you have sort of electrically powered vans. I think that's going to be a significant kind of double benefit there where it's taking other vehicles off the road and it's got low emissions as well. And I'd noticed that quite a few of the delivery companies are trialling and expect to increase the number of electric delivery vehicles over the coming years. I noticed in the last couple of weeks, the company that supplies vans to the Anglia and Water Company, they've announced that they're going to switch all their fleet to electric vehicles. So I think that's going to be something that we see becoming increasingly common over the coming years.
And my final question is, we know Milton Keynes very well, and in that area there, they're experimenting with delivery by pods on the pavements, which are everywhere across the city centre. Do you think that's the future of deliveries?
Certainly, I think it could be for the more urban areas. And I know that, you know, there's been discussions about that. I think Auron have trialled deliveries by drones. I think that they've got a trial that's currently running in Ireland to trial just that technology. But I think, yeah, I've seen the robots in Milton Keynes that deliver groceries. And that seems to be, you know, a possible way of delivering a lower emission level. So, yeah, so it'd be interesting to see if they roll that out kind of nationally, or whether it stays as a Milton Keynes only trial.
Thank you, Dan. I'm now going to go to members of the committee. Councillor Greggs, do we have any speakers? Councillor Taylor. Councillor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Very interesting presentation there, and it's encouraging to hear of the good progress which is being made. And at the end of the presentation, as we refer to working with partners. I mean, are we working with our partners such as schools and colleagues in education? Because we all know from our divisions, the congestion and emissions around our schools and the pressure that puts on the neighbouring properties. For example, are we trying to put pressure on encouraging walking and cycling? And also, I mean, also I took the, I arrived here by train today and arrived at five minutes to nine, so there are earlier trains to Lincoln. And on the other point regarding the delivery vehicles, they do also put some pressure on our roads. We know also our campaign for the twelve million pound missing million. So those extra delivery vehicles at the moment, if they are also large vehicles, does put some pressure on our roads, in particular those rural roads. So that is also to be concerned because it does affect us there. But going back to schools, if we are working in partnership with schools regarding trying to encourage a reduction in emissions, because we all know there's human behaviour such as parents arriving in good time and leaving the car engine running for half an hour to keep warm this time of year. That's not helping the environment or the neighbouring properties. Also regarding school buses, diesel buses, I believe mainly, do we operate any electric buses in Lincolnshire? Although if we don't have that information, that would be useful to have because we've heard your report about petrol and diesel engines. But if we are looking at introducing the bus and coach companies for electric vehicles, that would certainly help emissions around our schools and quality of life. Thank you.
Thank you. Before I hand it over to Dan to answer your question, I'm approaching my seventieth birthday this year. And I can remember walking to school and people didn't drive anywhere. So obviously lifestyle has changed so much these days, but I'm going to go to Dan to answer your second point. Dan?
Yeah, so on the electric buses, yeah, we certainly are looking at that. So I know that the local transport plan includes suggestions around, you know, differently powered buses. And there was the Bus Strategy Improvement Plan that was produced in, I think it was in October last year, which specifically has in it details of a trial to use different fuelled buses. So I think that is coming. And I think the government's roadmap for zero carbon transport, it talks about phasing out petrol and diesel cars from twenty thirty. But I think in the longer term, it says in there about phasing out larger vehicles as diesel vehicles from twenty forty. So I think that is something that we're going to see. We are trying to work with schools. We previously had a project called SCORE, which was well funded, that worked with schools on kind of environmental awareness and then energy efficiency projects to reduce the emissions from the schools. We've got our Salix funding pot of energy efficiency money, which we can look at to work with schools to kind of improve the energy efficiency standards of their schools. And then on the school's transport, there's a specific project that's going on. I think there's one trial in Boston, and we're also looking to work with some schools in Lincoln to do exactly as you described, to encourage people to use non-vehicle modes of transport to schools. So we are looking at that. And I think the idea is then that there's funding through the Sustainable Travel Budget that we get funding from the Department for Transport for, that can then be used to kind of roll those principles out to schools around the county. And we're also looking at improving the links so that there are safe routes for children to travel to the schools. So we're looking at a project through the Capability Fund that's funded through the Department for Transport to improve cycle paths and footpaths so that there are those routes that kids can travel to the school safely.
Thank you, Dan. Councillor, does that answer your question? Thank you very much, Chair. You made some very good points there. I've noted them down. Thank you. Councillor Greggs?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I have a couple of points. Firstly, I think the work we're doing is great. I think the big issue for me Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Um I have a couple of points. Firstly, I think, you know, the the work we're doing is great. I think the the big issue for me is that central government need to provide a lot more money. And I appreciate that the central government have provided a lot of money for lots of things recently, and it all needs to be paid for. Um but unfortunately, if we want to hit the carbon targets, I mean, I I was just having a quick look. Um in terms of transportation, you know, ma- many areas of our communities, especially our communities being such a rural county, don't have access to good public transport, which means we can't rely on public transport. Um obviously, we've got E ten fuel now. Um and whilst apparently it's supposed to only burn uh ten percent, it's supposed to be uh ten percent less efficient in your car unless you have a car that's over ten years old. And I know I do approximately sixty percent of the miles on the on the same amount of fuel that I did with, you know, the the older fuel that had less ethanol in it. Um so again, that's putting a further cost burden, especially on poorer people. Battery technology isn't great for long journeys for a car. And again, at that point, we were talking about um deliveries and, you know, um electric vans, et cetera. And I thought, I wonder how good they are now. So I had a quick look. A fully electric van that's not currently on sale until spring this year on a full charge will do a hundred and twenty-six miles. I mean, I'm not a delivery driver, but I'd imagine that's not great for a delivery driver to then need a full charge. A hybrid one that was on sale this year, that's deemed like, you know, one of the best ones on there, has a four-point-three-hour charging time to get thirty and a half miles on a fully electric charge. And that's ludicrous. You you're gonna need fourteen vehicles as a single delivery driver to go out and do your rounds. I mean, it's great, and I'm I'm not saying we shouldn't pursue it. But it just seems that we don't have the technology to support this aim at the moment. Why are we all throwing money at absolutely everything that's not going to achieve our outcomes in the first place? And then we've got the cost of, you know, mining the materials needed for the batteries, the disposal of things when they go wrong. Um and it just seems ridiculously obscure to me. Um another couple of points I have in terms of housing. Again, I think, you know, it it's a great aim and aspiration. Um but again, at briefing, I I spoke about it. Some houses are unable to retrofit. You know, depending what property it is, you may not be able to have a ground source heat pump. Um you you may have other issues. And not only that, I I know for Boston, we have some of the highest rents as a percentage of wages in the country. And unfortunately, private landlords aren't going to freely of charge upgrade their houses. They're going to add that cost on to their rents, which then makes them more unaffordable, which puts a greater burden on social state as well, because obviously we have housing benefit. I I do apologise, councillor Canton, it's not drivel, it's factual. And and you're more than welcome to dispute these facts in a moment. But, yeah, we we have to be careful. We have to do it in a controlled, staggered approach that achieves our aims, doesn't put um an undue burden on our residents or the county or the sen- or central government. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, thank you, Vice Chairman. I mean, you made some good points there, particularly about public transport. I mean, this county is um not very good for public transport. I mean, I come from Maystead in Kent, where a bus came past the main road every five minutes years ago, and it still does in certain areas. So and also, you talked about um the E ten fuel as well. Because that is a problem nationwide, that people are using more fuel on the upgraded fuel. But I'm gonna bring Dan in now. Dan.
Um, yeah, I think I think they're um all all relevant points. I think on on the battery technology, I mean, it it is kind of progressing rapidly. So there's been, you know, significant improvements over over the last few years. I mean, when when you look at electric vehicles, you could buy sort of five, ten years ago, you were looking at maybe sort of seventy, eighty miles as a as a maximum amount. And now they're kind of getting up to the sort of two hundred and fifty, three hundred miles. And I think the 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 sort of technology reports I've been looking at and the the stuff that the Department for Transport have been talking about is that sort of by the end of this decade, um battery technology will have progressed to such an extent that you'd be looking at similar mileage to what you get from a diesel vehicle from uh one electric charge. Now, that obviously then creates the issue of where all the charging point's going to be. So I think that's why the the work that WSP have done on a an electric vehicle charging strategy for the county is important. So um so I think we've got to um, we've got to take that WSP report on board and then and then probably use the um the the government funding that's coming through. So there's due to be a local um EV infrastructure fund that the Department for Transport are going to fund through the Office for Zero Emission Vehicles. That's due to launch later this year. And what I'd like to see is uh the county council making sure that we put in a a good and considered application to that. Because um, you know, if if the government's providing money to install these things, we might as well have it in in Lincolnshire. Otherwise, it's going to go to, you know, the the surrounding counties and and you kind of um as as EVs become more common, I think it's going to be important for our kind of tourist offer that we have sufficient charging points in in especially in the tourist destinations. If if people come from outside the county and they they can't charge their electric vehicles up, then, you know, they're unlikely to make a second visit if they have a bad experience. So so I think if we we try and use that government funding to to introduce some of these things, then that that doesn't add additional budget pressures on to us directly. Um and, yeah, and I think though, as the government policy works through, um you know, that there's going to be more availability of of electric vehicles as a second-hand, especially hybrid vehicles as second-hand vehicles as well.
Thank you, Dan. Uh my next speaker is councillor Baxter. Councillor Baxter.
Chair, Chair, for the sake of continuity, I'd be happy to give way to councillor Carrington and come in later.
Thank you very much indeed. Councillor, I've got my next speaker is councillor Hayes actually. Councillor Hayes.
Thank you, Chairman. Um Dan's just touched on part of my question, which was has this council and the other councils throughout Lincolnshire started to collaborate with each other for charging points in the various car parks around the county? Thank you.
That's a good point to thank Dan.
Yeah, yeah, certainly. We have been having those discussions through our, we have a um like a Sustainability Officers Working Group. And I know there's a there's a transport-related one as well. So the thing with electric vehicles is that it touches on several different areas. So I think um yeah, ideally, I I had a couple of discussions with um with members from other teams. It would be good to have a kind of overview group um that that kind of covers all of this and includes the district councils as well. But I I do know that um, you know, that the city council have have recently submitted a a bid for um electric vehicle charging points within their car parks. And, you know, we were kind of aware of that and gave some feedback on it. So yeah, I think it's going to be something that we we do do collaborate more and more um within this area.
Thank you, Dan. For personal experience, I took an electric car to be charged a couple of weeks ago. And um I could have filled it up with fuel in time. It just took ten percent to get there. So uh we were not there yet on the charging front because some of the charges do charge faster. Some of the charges do charge different prices to charge your vehicle. And we're going to bring councillor Canton in now.
Thanks very much, Chairman. Um yeah, I think, in fact, the point that I think was most important in Dan's presentation. I always get this wrong. Can you hear me now? Excellent. Um I think the point that was actually most important in Dan's presentation is one that hasn't been commented on yet. Um and that is the importance of front-loading. Um if, as he rightly said, we all leave our practical efforts until the very end, as we're heading toward twenty fifty, the ineluctable mathematics of this problem mean that we will significantly overshoot our carbon uh requirements. So uh from my point of view, I would I would applaud that. And I would ask all authorities in Lincolnshire and all partners with the county council to work as urgently as possible on practical steps. And that does lead me on to the issue of housing. Everybody has very powerful opinions about climate change. Uh and many people go off on protests and wave placards and glue themselves to the highway. I have to say to this chamber, climate change will not be tackled by having strong opinions or by protests. It will be tackled and the challenge will be met by engineering, by a frightening amount of mathematics, by very hard work, by walking hard yards and by making some very, very hard choices. Now, on the subject of housing, I fully hear what uh the Vice Chairman has said, and I accept and respect his opinion. But in terms of facts, um I need to declare a bit of an interest in that I'm at Northcush Stephen District Council, the Executive Board Member for Housing and the Capital Programme. We have an advanced programme for looking at retrofitting almost four thousand council homes of our own. We've been working on it for two years. And I have to say, the whole issue of upgrading housing, there are twenty-four point two million dwellings in the United Kingdom at the latest count. If we crack the issue of domestic uh energy efficiency in dwellings, we effectively are very, very likely to meet the challenge of net zero by twenty fifty. If we don't, we won't. It's as simple as that. We have a pilot programme which is exploring how we should achieve that. But I have to say to colleagues, just because something is very difficult and may appear impossible does not mean that we shouldn't do it or that it is impossible. Uh I'm from a generation which sees something difficult and doesn't say we'll shy away from it. It says that makes it all the more important that we do the difficult thing. Councillor Griggs is correct that there are some dwellings which no dwelling is impossible to upgrade. There are some dwellings where financially it is probably not worth uh uh the effort, and it might actually be better just to remove it and replace another one. Most dwellings, however, are, and I can assure colleagues around this chamber, um that the programme that we are piloting this year in twenty twenty-two that we've developed over the past eighteen months will explore and test that out. But the issue of funding is a very important one. To raise a dwelling from, say, Energy Performance Certificate Band E up to Band B, which will get you kind of eighty percent of the way toward net zero. You're looking at costs, depending on the kind of dwelling, of at least twenty thousand, but maybe up to forty or fifty thousand. So going back to the notion of people working together, one of the things that I certainly want to see is all authorities and social housing providers working together to try and bear down on these costs. We have to drive up the performance uh e- environmental performance of dwellings. Uh we have to drive down the costs. The easy bit is building new houses to a higher standard. And reference has been made to uh changes in the local plan. We'll get those done. I'm a rep on that committee. That we can sort. Um the really, really challenging bit is upgrading existing housing stock. It's difficult for social landlords. It's difficult for individual uh householders. And that is the bit and the funding and the tax uh implications of that, which we really have to crack. But just because it's hard, Chairman, doesn't mean it's impossible, doesn't mean that we can't do it. Thank you.
Councillor Canton, that sounds very exciting. Are are you in a position to provide members to exactly what your authority is doing to retrofit these new, these social housing?
Uh, sorry, could you say that again, Chairman?
That sounds very exciting. Are you in a position to to inform our members exactly what what you're doing, what retrofit you're doing to these houses?
Uh, yeah, sure. Happy happy to do that, Chairman. I can discuss that with you after the meeting.
Good. Thank you very much indeed. I've got fifteen minutes left and I've got three speakers. Yes, yeah, go ahead.
Thank you very much for letting me come back, Mr. Chairman. Um I believe you may have under misunderstood my point, councillor Carrington, because from what I've gathered, you didn't disagree with anything I said. Um and and that could be me slightly misremembering what I said, so I just wanted to clarify. When I said it's impossible, it's not technically impossible. You know, realistically, we put people on the moon. We do all sorts of wonderful and ridiculous things. Unfortunately, an economics impossible doesn't necessarily mean it can't be done. It means it won't be done because it's cost prohibitive. Um and you're quite right, it will be solved by engineers and maths and all sorts of technology, and that requires funding. So I just wanted to clarify that I, you know, I don't think you disagreed with my point. You just potentially come at it from a slightly different angle. And as you said, you know, you you'll know, um the plan is to make all private rented sector um houses to be at least energy rating C. And I I would imagine in your patch, much as mine, there's many old houses that are currently struggling to hit the E mark and would require significant investment, which would be extremely cost prohibitive.
Councillor Canton, just to come back quickly.
Just through you, Chairman, I'm pleased to see that harmony is breaking out.
Okay. Right, my next speaker is councillor Dyer. Councillor Dyer.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman. Um and I I think the disappointing thing is that we're not gonna see you glued to Cannick Hill, councillor Carrington, in protest. But there are some interesting points there. And um as you say, housing is one of the the key obstacles to tackle. And I'd certainly be interested to know what the other district councils are doing in Lincolnshire and I and the social landlords as well. Um because I am aware of what Northcush Stephen are doing. Obviously, I follow it closely with my division being in Northcush Stephen, and there's some very positive um stuff, I suppose, coming coming from that. But um just a few questions stroke points that I had on on the report, Dan. Um and I, it it does pain me to say this because on on the city council, our comrades say it all the time, every time a report comes in front of them, they they always compliment how fantastic a report is. So I try not to compliment a report unless I genuinely think it. And I I have to say, Dan, I'm I'm really pleased to see this data and this breakdown by district. It's really helpful. Um so thank you for putting this together. Um just some points now coming on to those points. Um you you mentioned the emissions from delivery drivers, and I get that and I understand that. And actually, my local delivery driver actually dri- drives an electric van. Um so hopefully, we can see more of those rolled out. But do we have many um delivery locker units across the county? I'm aware of several in Lincoln, but are these evenly spread out across the county? Do we have any data on how well-used they are? Um, you know, it's like the Amazon lockers, for instance, where you can you can pick up your delivery on the way tomorrow since. Just wondering how many of those there are around the county. Um and one point I did write down, and councillor Taylor covered, and you answered as well. It was about these these routes, um school journey routes, where we could potentially, as a council, look to improve routes. Where perhaps it's virtually impossible now for children to walk to school, but with some investment in routes, um we can change that and we can encourage peo- um students to cycle and walk to school. Um do we have a list of these routes? And is that something that could come to committee at some point? So we can review those. I can think in my own division, I've already spoken um spoken to Chris about this when I first got elected, a route from Waddington to to Hycam, which is a potential route. And I'm sure there's ones across the county. So I'm just curious as to know whether that would come to committee at any point. Thank you, Chairman.
Yeah, thank you very much, councillor. Um before I go back to Dan, this is a very interesting subject, I'm sure, close to all our hearts. I think what I'd like to see is a further update in three months' time. Are you all agreed to that? Good, good. Dan.
Um, yeah, on the on the post, um the kind of delivery boxes, um I haven't got numbers on total figures around the county, but we have been approached in um it was a few weeks before Christmas, and I had a a meeting with um with representative from the company. And they they're looking to um have a national network of um of um boxes, collection boxes, that are kind of not just linked to one company like the Amazon ones are. Um and um they've identified um Lincoln and Boston as their that they've got, they they've um designated the the whole country, split it into kind of three priority areas. So the top priority ones are the kind of major cities. And then Lincoln and Boston are in Priority Zone Two. And then other major settlements around the county are in Priority Zone Three. So they're looking to start rolling out these uh these boxes to um to Lincoln and Boston kind of later this year, I think, in the the sort of second quarter. And then next year, other major settlements will be picked up. And the idea is that you're never more than a kilometer in urban areas away from one of these collection points. So so I think as, you know, I think there are a number of other firms that are kind of looking to to roll out um similar ones. So it could be an opportunity to kind of site them at locations like libraries and community centres and potentially even village halls as well, so as as sites have them. And it could be a a kind of income generation because they do pay a a ground rent for for citing them there. So I think that that's um that that's a potential. And it'll be interesting to see what kind of how they roll out around the county and how heavily used they are. And then on the the list of routes to school, yeah, we would be happy to um to bring an update on on that to a a future meeting of the committee. Um we've been looking at, I was discussing it with the Sustainable Transport Officer earlier this week. We're looking at um a route to the um on the A fifteen to the to the south of the county, um sort of towards, as it, as the A fifteen heads down towards sort of Bournemouth. There are, there are sort of four schools that are close to the A fifteen. And if we can kind of sort out the the cycling route along there, then that will potentially give access to to three secondary schools and the and the primary school. So that 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 would then give, you know, significant opportunities to reduce the um the cost of um of getting children to the school. So so, yeah, so we'll we'll definitely bring that update to a to a future committee meeting.
Thank you, Dan. Councillor Greggs, are you happy with that response? Thank you. My next questioner is councillor Fleetwood.
I think this is all about managing expectation. And if we go back a few years, if you go back to the fifties and sixties, uh in Lincoln, you would probably not be woken up in the morning by the milkman because his milk float was electric. was electric. And I think a lot of vehicles at that time, it was possible to do rounds deliveries with smaller vehicles. But if you're out in the countryside, the same milk marketing board, whoever they were, would have then used a diesel vehicle to deliver because the range wasn't sufficient. The real issue with regard to the whole situation is charging points. And I remember watching Top Gear a few years ago when a certain Jeremy Clarkson came to Lincoln looking for a charging point, and he actually came to this building and inquired at reception whether there was a charging point. And of course there wasn't, so there's no surprises there. So it's all about managing expectation. You can go to Lidl now, I was in the fish shop queue the other day and talking to a chap with one of these Tesla cars. And I said, how do you get on with it? How expensive is it? Is, how do you charge it? He said, well, I'm going to charge in point at home, I go to Lidl and get it charged because it's just the easy fix, easy fix for me. I can do it while I'm shopping. But then you get to the situation where if you're on the edges of Lincoln and you've got terraced housing or whatever, and you're looking up and down the streets and you're thinking, okay, if we look at the Monks Road area, you've got roads going up and down, left, right, lots of two, two down terraces. If each of those houses had a charging point, there'd be an awful lot of cables drifting across the footpath, trip hazards and not allowing people to actually use the footpaths how they should do. So what are all those people going to do in ten, fifteen years' time when you can only buy electric vehicles? There will be a need, I think, to provide some sort of communal charging facility somewhere whereby people can take the vehicles and get them charged, even park them overnight if the charging takes that long. So there's some real issues attached to the charging rates and the amounts, the demands attached to them, true of Boston, true of a lot of two, two down properties. Moving on to the housing issue, and it's been alluded to by one or two people, some houses probably can't be upgraded. West Lindsay are currently looking at a landlord policy in Gainsborough South West, Hemswell Market Raisin, where they are going to licence properties, have a, an agreement with private landowners, householders, tenants, landlords, whatever, whereby they charge a fee, a five year licence, and this is provisionally going into place, that they're going to move properties potentially from a band E property to a band C property. Now, moving a property from a band E to a band C is one ginormous step forwards and it is the costs attached to it. And if you, again, if you look at some of those two, two down properties, a lot of them, it will be physically impossible to do so because they don't have cavity walls, which you can inject whatever into, they have solid brick walls, they have no thermal value, they potentially have damp problems, and there's a thousand and one other issues attached to them. So let's try and manage expectation. Yes, we can go in the right direction, but we can see from the graphs that we're actually making the right steps now, but, you know, we may well fail, but at least we'll have made a lot of, a lot of distance in the right direction. But let's just try and manage expectation.
Yeah, thank you councillor Fleetwood, I mean, you're, you're quite correct, I know in Grantham there are hundreds of homes which were built in the early eighteen hundreds with no, no proper cavity position. And, but there's one point I want to come to is, I've been informed that the, the amount of vehicles that are being charged at the moment, if that rate increases, that the national grid has nearly tripped already twice because it couldn't cope with the numbers. So it worries me that more and more people are charging, there'll be more power cuts. Dan, do you wish to comment on that?
Um, yes, I think I, I, I went out on site to, to K Thorpe just before Christmas to, to look at, because the, the parish council there are interested in having some charging points, because it, it's, it's an issue as well, but in, in the kind of historic centres of a lot of our villages, a lot of the houses there don't have Austrian parking, so they would need, as well, like, like the areas like Monks Road, they would need some kind of on the street charging solution. And we, we met with Western Power there and they're, they're looking, they've got a programme to kind of install new substations in points around the county that will allow a kind of more dynamic use of the, the charging network. So, so the idea is that not only could vehicles extract electricity, but in certain circumstances they could feed back in and it'd also allow kind of roof mounted solar panels to feed back into the electricity grid. So Western Power are kind of looking at that, that issue. And then on, on the housing side of things, I think one of the key things is, is the skills issue that we, we've talked about. So because it's not just a, a straightforward kind of put insulation on and forget about, it is a skilled job and if you don't do it properly, then you can cause considerable damage to your property. So having that skilled workforce is going to be crucial in achieving these, these improvements. And, and it is a, a kind of ideal, I think it's selling it to the, to the students because there's, there's potentially kind of thirty, forty years' worth of work there to go through the, the, the housing stock within the country of, of adding insulation to them. So it is definitely a, a good sector for a, a new tradesman starting out to, to look at, definitely.
Thank you very much indeed. Before I bring in the last speaker, I want to bring in Vanessa Strange, who should come in. Vanessa?
If I may chairman, I just wanted to mention that the local transport plan that Dan referred to will be coming to full council in the spring and I just wanted to highlight the work around alternative fuels in that is, in the document is intended to be a, a live piece of work. This is such a fast moving arena that we acknowledge that we can't write a document that says this is our final plan because things like induction loops and alternative fuels including hydrogen well, may well be kind of part of the bigger picture for Lincolnshire over the period of time. So I just wanted to highlight that to members. Thank you chairman.
Thank you very much indeed. I mean, you certainly are on an exciting time, so I hope you're going forward at the moment. And the last speaker is councillor Ashley Baxter.
Thank you chair. councillor Carrington mentioned the importance of good maths and good science. So I'd like to ask, on page, I think it's page twenty four, we say in the last paragraph of, of paragraph two, that the total carbon emissions for the Lincoln County area was three point five seven million tonnes of carbon dioxide. In the next paragraph, we say that the carbon emissions were three point five seven million tonnes. They can't both be right, as GCSE physics will tell you, carbon dioxide and carbon don't weigh the same. So we need a bit more clarity and, and accuracy in, in this reporting, especially when you compare it with further down, underneath the pie chart and the, the next chart, we say that, I'm sorry, a bit further down still, underneath the bar chart, figure four, it says that carbon dioxide emissions have fallen from six point one million tonnes to four point four million tonnes. I don't know how that relates to the three point five million tonnes of either carbon or carbon dioxide that was, that was mentioned earlier in the paragraph. So there seem to be anomalies in the report and we need to get this kind of thing right. Personally, I, it, it gets my goat when we get CO2 notation wrong, but I haven't spotted that in here, so at least we're getting something right. We've, we seem to be achieving the reductions we have so far mainly by changes to supply rather than to demand. So we've talked about the change in the UK energy mix, switch from coal to gas and from gas to renewable. That's great, but that would happen without us doing anything, without us turning off a single light or whatever. And we need to, as a county, we can more influence the way that we as an authority or the way that individuals take individual actions than we can the, the UK energy mix. Although, people in my division at the moment are very interested in the proposals for large solar. Personally, I think that we need more renewables in the UK and they've got to go somewhere. But I certainly hear the people of Braceborough and Willsthorpe who are saying, well, surely these solar panels could go somewhere else. As a country, we have failed to put solar panels, solar PV and solar thermal and other renewable technologies in other places. And so we're looking at large scale schemes to fix the problems so that we don't, councillor Carrington said overshoot, I think it's probably undershoot the, the renewable target. And so when, when we form an opinion about large scale solar schemes as a county, we need to be mindful of what we're actually doing with our own buildings and as district councils with our own building, building, local plans. Because councillor Carrington said, said the easy bit is building houses to a higher standard. If that's the easy bit, then I have to ask, since the early nineties, we've been banging on about putting more loft insulation in and bringing houses up to a better standard and as a nation, we appear to have failed to bring old houses up to a decent standard, a decent standard for occupancy and comfort, let alone for energy efficiency. I'd like to ask about the lad, the lad, he's a lad, the GL lad, which is mentioned further down the report, I can't find the paragraph right now, but there's a big number mentioned, I think it's something like five hundred million pounds, yeah, five hundred million pounds at the bottom of page thirty. Of that five hundred million pounds, how much is coming to Lincolnshire? I'd like to ask about the ratio, when we talk about how well we've done with our half a percent of the council's overall emission, and we keep slapping ourselves on the back for how well we've brought down the total emissions since nineteen ninety, what is the ratio of, of the savings? What part of that ratio is down to the changing UK energy mix? How much is by reducing our services or at least the buildings and staff from which those services are provided? And how much is from actual implementation of renewable measures or reductions in, in consumption? SKDC is worth mentioning because you were asking councillor Carrington about what's happening at Northcush Stephen. At, at Southcush Stephen, we have made some progress in terms of insulating our, our housing stock, partly through government funding, but we did win an award or we, we were granted an award of a million pounds to improve our own council amenity stock with the, the council officers and so on, but we had to give it back because of the, the government's chaotic approach to awarding this money. We had a million pounds, we couldn't spend it by the, the impossibly tight deadline and had to give it back. And my final point on the school transport is that if we're interested in reducing the emissions from travel to school, one place in the budget line we could look is the eight million pounds we spend each year on taxis to get children to school. There are a hundred valid reasons why children might get taxis and I'm not talking about buses, I'm talking about taxis to school, eight million quid. There's a saving for carbon and also a saving for the authority potentially. Thank you chair.
Thank you councillor Baxter. Do you wish these answers to your questions now or would you like them in an email? Because it's quite a number of questions you've put to Dan there.
The other members have the courtesy of an answer now, so I don't see why I should be excluded.
I quite agree, I quite agree with your, with your views, but Dan, are you over to answer all those questions?
Um, yeah, I've been jotting them down. So the, the anomaly is in the report. Um, yeah, I take your point on the, the, the division between carbon and carbon dioxide and I normally run through all my reports to make sure I have used carbon dioxide. So the figures do refer to carbon dioxide rather than carbon figures. The difference between the two figures is the, the three point five seven million is the figure that was from our report that we commissioned through ETU and the four point four million figure is the base figures that come from the government. So I should have made that distinction clear within them. I don't have overall figures for the local authority delivery programme because that's distributed at district council level. So, so the money's given straight to the, the district councils, we, we don't have a, a kind of overall view of that. So it just depends what, what's been allocated. And I think originally that was money that district councils had to bid for and then in the latest round of it, the local authority delivery programme two, they, they just allocated it through the Midlands Energy Hub on those. So each council has, has definitely got some money through it. But yeah, I could, I could find those figures out and, and report that back to you. And then on the, the mix of what emissions have been saved through the different routes, so what percentage is from the reduction in the energy consumption of the grid and, and the, what, what part is from reduction in buildings and services and what part is from our kind of overall energy efficiency work? I can calculate those figures and we'll, we'll bring that back in a, a future report. But we have put significant investment into, into energy efficiency at the council buildings. So I think over the years from our start off of the, the Salix funding pot, there's, we started off, I think the, the county council put half a million into that and it's, it's now worked through about four million pounds' worth of energy efficiency improvements that have been done at county council operated buildings around the county. So, so yeah, so we, we have put significant amounts of money into that. There's always more that could be done in energy efficiency work and I think that the kind of price rises that we've seen over the last couple of months mean that projects that weren't fundable through the, the Salix fund previously because of payback times, they've got quite tight limits on, on payback periods that you need for your energy efficiency projects, they now become doable through the Salix scheme. So there's probably another round of projects that, that we couldn't do in the previous versions of the scheme that we can now do. So, so yeah, so yeah, I think we'll, I'll, I'll come back to you on those, that ratio of, of, of the different sectors there.
Thank you very much indeed Dan, thank you councillor Baxter. You know members that I'm really keen on finishing on time, we are now fifteen minutes overrun, but I've deliberately done that because I think it's a very interesting topic that we're debating this morning and obviously I hope Dan brings it back again in three months' time. But my last speaker I'm going to allow is councillor Spratt, councillor Spratt.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Just a couple of comments if I may and then a, a point, I, I've had a bit of trouble with my old boiler. I'm not talking about my other half by the way, but I, I, I've been looking at one of these new heat pump type things and I was advised by the plumber yesterday, oh my god, oh no, whatever you do, don't. I'll leave that, I'll make a very brief comment at that point. I thought it was highly unfortunate that the government stopped, first of all, reduced and stopped the subsidies to households having solar panels put on the roof. And I, I just think that was a retrograde step at the time they did it, although I guess it was an inevitability that the subsidy would come to an end eventually. I, two points that councillor Fleetwood made, first of all, the idea about the, the chargers going over the footpaths and such like and, and that potentially could happen rather a lot in Lincoln where there's a lot of very small houses, very close together. Um, I, it is a possibility of course, I don't see it like that. I see as, as the officers, as Matt said about charging substations, that's a, I think instead of, I mean, you don't have petrol at home by and large, do you? You go to top it up and I think once these chargers are more efficient and as councillor Griggs said, speed up the charging, then I, I envisage that instead of having garages selling petrol and diesel, they'll probably have twenty or thirty charging points. Of course, that will need investment. But one really important point, another important point I should say that councillor Fleetwood made, and that's managing expectations. And it's important for this angle and nobody's mentioned it. Everybody thinks at the moment, like we get an electric car, I've got a hybrid, a new one as well, managing expectations, everybody thinks we're on a, a free ride or almost next to nothing energy. But you just think when we get to a certain point in the future, when the government phase out petrol tax and car tax and such like, it's going to leave a thirty four billion pound black hole. And I can genuinely see the government having to, I don't know what Matt thinks, probably taxing people by the mile according, you know, when they have their MOTs and that. And I, I think that could, when that reality dawns, I think that might actually put people off going electric until they're absolutely forced to.
Yeah, you're, you're quite right, I was travelling out this morning. I was travelling out this morning on the radio. I think the mayor of London, Steve Khan, was saying that he was going to introduce a drive by pay by mile to drive in London, which would, I think, deter people from entering the city. So yes, and on that point, I'm going to move this report. It's been a very long debate. Kiara's taken down quite a lot of notes. It's been very interesting. I've asked Dan, and thank you, Dan, for your input this morning, to bring a further report in three months' time. But the proposal I have is I move that the committee receive this report and request that our comments as recorded are taken into account. Does anyone dissent? All those in favour, please raise your hand. Good, that's carried fully. Thank you very much indeed. Although we are overrun, we're only 15 minutes behind. So item seven now is the Lincolnshire Homeowner Flood Property Resilience Acceptance Scheme Update. This item is on pages 33 to 36 of the Agenda Pack and updates the committee on the development and promotion of the council's pilot to enhance the resilience of properties to flooding through Lincolnshire in locations where traditional community based initiatives would not be economically feasible through grant source measures. This report will be presented by Matthew Harrison, flood and water manager. The actions today are the committee is invited to review and comment on the scope and status of the project and guide officers in developing the project further. Over to you, Matthew.
Thank you, Chairman, and good morning, everybody. Yes, so if I may, I will take the report as read and just pick up on some of the pertinent points within that for discussion today. During 2019 and 2020, as I'm sure many of you will remember, Lincolnshire suffered particularly with several heavy rainfall events. And that had quite a devastating impact on several communities and properties as well. So within the county council and through the flood risk team, we saw an opportunity to explore a pilot property flood resilience, so P F R, as you'll probably often see it referred to, a scheme there to run a pilot based on something that was being delivered in Essex County Council. However, we saw an opportunity here to improve and tailor that programme and need therefore, particularly for Lincolnshire, to meet our own needs for residents and individuals in the county. So in the broader context, property flood resilience, the P F R, is on the national agenda at the moment. And this particular pilot project has got some interest from various organisations. And as you will see in the body of the report there, actually got flagged up by MPs as well, who are also keen to see some of the learning that we take from this. At a national scale, the approach that we're taking within Lincolnshire is unique. We have developed several systems and bespoke measures which are specific to each property. This includes a case management system to minimise the administrative loads and burdens on the flood risk team. That's been developed specifically for ourselves. And the use of standard templates to align with processes with the National Property Flood Resilience Code of Practice. And the trial scheme looks at all, the whole suite of P F R measures for properties. So resistance, the recoverability and preparedness measures, some detail of which I'll come on to in a moment. So as I say, there is some national interest in this. Lincolnshire ran a 12 month pilot to install bespoke measures across a range of properties. These were residents that were willing to take part in the pilot and had suffered internal flooding to properties and had been the result of section 19 flood investigation reports that had been completed. We contacted through the flood risk team residents directly and asked if they would like to participate. And as I say, 10 properties participated in the pilot, which was really useful in identifying some lessons learned, both in the systems that we use and the practical measures that can be delivered for properties. So following on from that, we have gone on to develop those mechanisms for the delivery of bespoke P F R measures, ensuring the scheme is tailored to specific needs of residents for the county, not just a one size fits all. And this needs to deliver value for money and minimise the resource expenditure in terms of administration. And that's using those systems that I've talked about. And this mechanism went live in July of last year, in July 2021. We have set a target that the scheme will aim to protect up to 35 eligible properties from all sources of flooding via the installation of proportionate and bespoke resistance, recoverability and preparedness measures, which I talked about earlier. I won't go into the detail now, the explanation of each of those is identified in the report. But within that, it does give some examples of what we're looking at. As I say, to hopefully deliver a whole suite of measures for the benefit of individuals and residents. So this is a collaborative process with the flood risk team at the county council and property owners. A flood hazard and hazard and property assessment survey is undertaken. And then the number of eligible properties are identified and outlined within an outline business case, an O B C. As we are also sourcing funding through the national funding pot of the Grant in Aid scheme through the Environment Agency and local levy funds through the Regional Flood and Coastal Committee. So this is a partnership approach to funding. So the funding has been requested to move 35 properties per year from the very significant to the significant risk bandings, which is clearly an improvement. Clearly, risks cannot be eliminated altogether. But this is a way that property owners and individuals can build some resilience to their own properties and take some action for themselves. As well, of course, the work that risk management authorities do to better protect people from the risk of flooding, from all sources of flooding. So as we are at the moment, we have seven eligible properties that have been admitted onto the new scheme. We have the potential to further promote this and would be interested to hear from anybody who would like to take part in this scheme. And as you'll see on page 26, we are looking at, page 26 of the report, we are looking to expand how we can promote this scheme better through social media, parish and town councils, county news, local community resilience groups, just to name a few. I will leave it there for now, if I may, Chair. Other than just to say that the floods team will continue to work with our partners and residents to promote the scheme, as I've said. But would welcome any further comments, support or guidance from members of this committee as we continue to take this Homeowner Property Resilience Assistance Scheme forward in Lincolnshire. So thank you for that and happy to take questions at this point.
Thank you very much, Steve, Matthew. Matthew, I think there's nothing worse than having your property flooded. So I know some properties in my area which are susceptible to flooding. I'm sure you members can find or know properties as well. I'm now going to look to questions. Councillor Greggs, do we have any speakers? Councillor Carrington?
Not quite sure I was first, but I'll go. Chairman, I'm very aware of the time, so I'll be very brief. I'd just like to thank officers for the report. This is an incredibly important area. And as you said, Chairman, it's a very, very challenging one. I think we tend to think of flooding as something which comes when we have a breach of a dike or seawalls or whatever it might be. In point of fact, there are many, many other sources. It's a very challenging thing, particularly when dealing with groundwater flooding. So I would just like, Matthew, to confirm if you'd be kind enough that this programme will walk hand in glove, as it were, with the Upper Wytham Basin Groundwater Project, which is on a much larger scale. I do have one or two divisional issues, but those are not for the whole committee and I'll discuss those with officers directly. But definitely, I think this is something we should support. And rather like the last item, Chairman, it would be good if the committee could have regular updates. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Carrington. Matthew, do you wish to comment on councillor Carrington's views?
Yes, thank you. So first of all, I'm more than happy to bring regular updates to this committee as this project gets rolled out further. Also, members may recall a previous presentation I made on the Innovation Resilience Fund where we were successful in gaining some national funding to look at groundwater issues in Lincolnshire. Or that was the particular type of flooding that we identified for our project, that in Lincolnshire, we would wish to better understand groundwater flooding. So these two will go hand in hand. The learning that we take from the Innovation Resilience Fund for the Greater Lincolnshire Groundwater Project will help us to look at appropriate measures for the property level resilience when we are rolling out this project further. So very much aware of that groundwater is largely the unknown when it comes to the different source of flood risk that we face in the county. So very keen to make sure we make that connect with these two projects.
Thank you very much, Matthew. Next speaker is councillor Baxter. Councillor Baxter?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for the presentation and the report. I'm a bit confused about the numbers. Initially, the government invested 2.9 million pounds in three projects. Were those projects somewhere else? And is it easy to find the findings of those projects wherever they were? And then in our county, we're talking about 5,000 per property for 35 properties, ideally 35 per year. Although in one paragraph, we say that we're doing 10. And in another paragraph, we say that we've got seven people signed up. So either I'm confused or we've got, seven people have signed up, but 10 people are having the measures implemented. But that doesn't sound likely. So I'd also like to know how many premises in Essex? Are Essex on the same pathway? Do they also have a maximum of 30, 35 per year? And then generally, is it enough? Because we're facing the imminent catastrophe of climate change, as we've said earlier on. Flooding is going to be all over the place. We're going to have more than 35 properties flooded by various different means, whether it's coastal flooding or surface water flooding or any other kind of adverse weather flooding. 35 doesn't sound like very many. So when we've done the 35 and we've worked out that the measures work, how are we going to roll it out at the scale that is necessary? And who is likely to pay? Whether it's us or the private sector or the house builders or whatever, who is likely to pay? Finally, when I first read this report, I thought it might be about measures to prevent flooding happening. This is resisting a flood that is already taking place. Are we as a county able to do anything to promote surface, sorry, sustainable urban drainage systems and other small scale measures like changing the way that block paving is put in all over the place, replacing lawns with car parks? Is that something that we would want to do? I think it was. And if so, how do we or the districts implement it? Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Baxter. So you raised an important point about the numbers. Matthew, I would to explain that, please. Thank you.
Yes, I can. First of all, apologies if this wasn't clear in the report. The 2.9 million that was referred as nationally, that was to support some Pathfinder projects elsewhere in the UK. Lincolnshire wasn't part of that project. But that was some sort of inspiration where we then moved forward to look at how we could do something in Lincolnshire because that hadn't been picked as one of the nationally governed P F R Pathfinder projects. With regards to the financing, the 5,000 pounds of financial assistance was particularly to support the 12 month pilot, of which 10 properties were signed up to that pilot. That's where we took the learning from the measures that we had implemented. The further figures that are referred to in the report are now following on from that pilot as we now roll this out as a project in its own right. And that makes reference to the seven properties which are now signed up within the project that is being rolled out further. The funding for that now is partly joint, as outlined in the report in the table, where there's money being put in through Lincolnshire County Council, but as well as being supported through the local levy and grant in aid process. Obviously, I can follow on with answers to the other questions there raised by councillor Baxter. But just on the numbers, would you like me to pause there for a moment to just see if that answers the question?
Yes, please do. Thank you, thank you very much indeed. Any further questions?
I thought the gentleman was saying that he was going to pause in case we had any other questions on the numbers.
I do apologise, councillor Baxter. I couldn't hear properly, so I do apologise.
Yes, sorry, that's fine. I just wish to pause there just to hope that was some clarity on the numbers. But more than happy to pick up the other points raised there by councillor Baxter. Not a problem at all. I hope that also clarifies the sort of how this is likely to be funded, certainly in the short term. But this is a developing project and this is why I'm more than happy to bring it back to members in future meetings. With regards to sustainable urban drainage, within the Development Control Section at Lincolnshire County Council, they are actively working with developers and local planning authorities, with the district authorities, to look at new developments and how sustainable drainage features can be implemented in new developments. But there also is something to look at with regards retrofitting as well. There is also obviously some discussions around implementing Schedule III at the moment, which is back on the table about who will look after such features in developments. And I know the water companies are also heavily involved with those discussions at the moment. So that's possibly something we could look at bringing to a future meeting to give a little bit more detail on how that is likely to be seen going forward. With regards to the numbers of properties, it isn't enough. Clearly, this is a very, very small snapshot of those people who have been directly affected by flooding. But this is a case of working with property owners. And whilst we are as encouraging as we can be to the benefits that they can see from this, it is actually up to individual choice and preference whether they wish to see some of these features fitted on their own homes. So there are benefits, but the homeowner does ultimately have a say as to whether they wish to see this taken forward. So that's something that we're trying to work on with how we can promote this scheme better to make sure it's out there, people are aware of it, and then they can make those decisions themselves. And we can engage and work with residents where we need to so that they are better protected for any potential future flooding events. As we say, we can't eliminate things completely, but we can certainly be better prepared to make sure that people are hopefully not affected as badly as they may have been in the past. With regards to numbers for Essex County Council, I'm afraid I haven't got that at hand. I know they were working on a slightly different rationale to ourselves because the project that we're using is one that we've built on to develop our own ways and our own facts and figures. But I'm more than happy to take that away and can find out a little bit more about the approach in Essex if members so wish. I hope that's answered the questions there raised by councillor Baxter. But if I have missed anything, please let me know and obviously we'll revisit that.
Thank you very much, Steve, Matthew. Councillor Baxter, are you okay? Members, I must give you my apologies because 20 odd years ago, I got badly injured in the police while on duty. And therefore I had head injury and I do suffer from tinnitus. So at times, I can't hear what you're saying unless you speak directly into the microphone. So please bear that in mind because at times, it's like a jet engine in my head. So just bear that in mind, please. Thank you. I'm going to move to the proposal now. I move that we endorse the report and request our comments in relation to the scope and status of the project as recorded be taken into account and that further updates are shared with this committee as the project develops. Are we all in favour? Anyone against? No, that's carried. Thank you very much, Steve. Thank you. Move on now to item eight, which is the Green Master Plan 2021 Progress Report. This item is on pages 37 to 42 of the Agenda Pack and provides an update on the progress towards developing and delivering the council's Green Master Plan. This report will be presented by Dan Clayton. The actions are the committee is invited to agree to review and comment on the progress that has been made in initiating the delivery of the Green Master Plan and give its support for the project programme for 2022. Over to you again, Dan.
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, so this kind of, this report kind of links into the first one. So the first one kind of covered the countywide actions on reducing carbon emissions over the next sort of 20, 30 years. And this one looks at more at our own emissions from the council. So So and then the programme of projects that we've got coming up over the next few years. So back in 1990, the county council generated 55,000 tonnes of carbon dioxide per annum. And in 2019, this had been reduced to just under 22,000 tonnes. And as we discussed previously, this is for a variety of reasons, due to grid decarbonisation, our own investment in energy efficiency, and reduction in the size of the council's estate, and things like switching our streetlights around the county to LED lighting. So that's the kind of baseline of where we were. We're working on calculating the carbon emissions for future years. And we've been looking at the impact of the Covid pandemic on carbon emissions, because obviously it was the work from home directive when that kicked off. And I put some figures in there to show what the level of savings were. Again, this should be carbon dioxide savings from the table. And we were, over the course of 2019, 20, the figures for 2020 to 21 were that we had a 24% saving in electricity consumption. Gas savings were down 10%, and overall, when you compare the two, there was a 17% reduction in consumption over that period. So that was a significant saving. And it's been pointed out in other forums that it's not really, when you look in the totality of things across the country, we've probably just diverted carbon dioxide emissions from the county council's estate to the properties of our staff, and they're working at home. So they're consuming more carbon at home than they would do if they were in the office. So there is a methodology that's been produced by the Institute for Environmental Management and Assessment. And we're running through the data for that to see, and it is very much an estimation, but it kind of puts a finger in the air of what emissions from working from home are. So we shall hopefully have that in our 2022 carbon report that we're producing. So overall, that impact is that carbon dioxide emissions for the year, for the start of the pandemic, were reduced by 932 tonnes just through reduction in building-related carbon dioxide emissions. And then there's some anecdotal information that because of the actions that schools have taken over the first few months of this year, where they've had to increase ventilation rates, we haven't got the data yet, obviously, for the main kind of winter months. But indications were that in our maintained schools, energy consumption was up round about 15% because schools had windows open to try and ventilate those spaces. So hopefully, that period where they haven't to do that is coming towards an end. But it will likely increase the amount of energy consumed down there for the carbon dioxide emissions for future years. So that's a bit on the energy consumption. It's a year now since the green master plan came to this committee, and then it went to full council in March 2021 for approval. So there's some highlights in the report of things that have taken place over the first year. So we have the Lincolnshire Climate Summit in October at the showground at the Epic Centre that kind of brought together groups from not just around the county, but from around the country, and focused on the work that was going on outside of the council and reducing emissions in the county. We've had the report back on the Zero Carbon Castle project. So this is a project to try and make Lincoln Castle as a zero-carbon tourist attraction. And there's various projects that are going on to reduce the carbon emissions in there and reduce waste and increase the amount of recycling. And then look at how people travel to the castle as well. There's some work, and then they're giving information back to visitors as well. That's in the cafe and the shop there to, so that visitors can understand that, you know, the work that's going on to reduce carbon emissions. And then, as I've just discussed in the previous report, we've tried to create this countywide baseline that we can measure future progress against. We produced a local climate impacts profile. So this was working with the University of Lincoln. We've had some students from there, and they've gone through kind of local news reports over the last sort of 10 years to look at reports where there were climate-related incidents. So that could be flooding, it could be heat wave-related things, it could be reports on drought, and they've recorded those. And it's a methodology that's been used around the country to kind of do similar things. So we've got that report, and it looks at, you know, what the likely impacts are. And then we're hoping to then work that up into a more kind of climate change adaptation report that potentially works with other local authorities in the East Midlands and the district councils to look at adaptation work that can go on around the county. And then I think it's due next year. The central government is producing an update to the National Climate Risk Register, so that will inform this work as well. We've had the tree planting work, so we got £170,000 from the Forestry Commission for the Treescapes Fund. Those trees are actually being delivered later on this week. And we've got planting schemes starting with parish councils. We've got a planting day with Lindham on Sunday to plant trees at our own site at the Barlings Nature Reserve in the county, so that's getting underway. We're putting other bids in for other tree planting work, and working with landowners and the district councils and with North East Lincolnshire Council to try and get a joined-up tree strategy for Greater Lincolnshire. And then another area is the active travel work. So we, the Sustainable Travel Officer has moved into the sustainability team. So we're supporting some of the work that I discussed previously around improvement to cycle paths, the low-traffic neighbourhood work that the government funded through the Active Travel Fund. There was kind of low levels of funding in the first two rounds of that. But in round three, we're expecting a larger capital payment through that that could pay for things that we're talking about, cycle paths to link up to schools that reduce the number of paid-for journeys that we have to provide for the council. And then we're working on a project to develop a travel plan for the county council's own buildings for our own operations. So we've got a travel survey that's going out to staff potentially early in February to look at how people are currently travelling around the county in relation to their work activity. And then we'll make some recommendations on how we can reduce travel impacts based on that and work with other large employers in Lincoln in particular to look at sustainable travel options and supporting them. And then we produced a sustainability impact assessment tool that can be used to measure sustainability impact of projects and major construction projects that's kind of been through various officer committees in the council. And we're trialling that with the transformation programme at the minute. And then we've been working with various different directorates to deliver directorate-specific zero-carbon plans. So the property directorate at the county council has got one, working with the Fire and Rescue Service and with Public Health to develop their zero-carbon reports as well. And hopefully, we're going to pick up all the directorates with similar zero-carbon plants as well that can reduce the carbon dioxide emissions from their activities. And then we produced a report on the impact on the county council of the Environment Act. So that's kind of working its way through. I think it's going to the Corporate Environment Board in the next couple of weeks. And then that will then be probably come to this committee and to informal exec as well of what the implications are that are in the Environment Act, not just around the kind of biodiversity and waste stuff, but there are also things around air quality that are in there as well. So they're the sort of areas that we've covered in this first year. And then we've got a list of projects that we're planning to introduce for 2022, the 2022/23 budget year. So there's the Lincolnshire Climate Partnership, which I discussed briefly previously. So this is to create a business support package for businesses within the county to introduce environmental technology into their businesses. And we'd be discussing various ways of funding that. And there are some external bodies that, there's a model that's worked well in Oxfordshire. And Devon County Council are about to launch a similar project that uses this funding from external bodies to provide the finance to deliver things like switching your business premises to LED, installing solar panels, improving insulation, putting in new heat management systems, all that kind of thing. We've got a schools engagement project that we're looking to kick off in the next few weeks. So we previously have the school project that looked at schools. We've got some funding here. We can potentially tie in some of the Salix work, which is the funding for energy efficiency. So we could do an energy efficiency project within the school and then have a kind of pupil engagement project as well. So that's looking to kick off. And then we've got the increased tree planting project. So we're putting a bid into the Trees Call for Action Fund, and we're looking to set up a Greater Lincolnshire kind of forest partnership that will look to access some of the bigger central government funding from things like the Northern Forest, which covers part of the county council area, and also from the Woodland Trust. They've got a lot of funding through the Moors Grant Scheme. And also some agroforestry projects as well. We've had interest to develop large-scale areas of apple planting within the county. And then we've got the Zero Carbon Parishes project. So there's quite a few parish councils have expressed the interest in taking part in this. So we'll look to develop a carbon action plan for the parishes that have signed up to look at what they can do to reduce their own emissions. And there's a methodology that's been produced to create a baseline for each parish council area within the county, which is actually done for the whole of England, for every parish council area. And it gives you an idea of what your carbon emissions are. And then we can work with them to introduce action plans to reduce that. We've got an update to the carbon management plan, which runs out in 2023, so we're looking to update that document. There's the new biodiversity net gain process, which is part of the Environment Act 2021. The government's just launched a consultation last week on that. So we'll be looking to take part in that and then looking at how this will impact on development around the county. So the idea is that developments must increase the biodiversity value of the site or on a reasonable basis by at least 10%. And that will be delivered through the planning system. So we're looking at we can get the best benefit from that around the county. I discussed before about the issues around deliveries and the increasing number of vans. So we've had a company express interest in a last-mile delivery kind of cargo bike project. So I think there are 10 cities already in the UK that have got this sort of system operating. And basically, they have a hub where deliveries are brought into on the edge of town. And then they have a bike system that then delivers them into the city. So we're looking at supporting that and how we can work with them. And then I talked previously as well about the electricity network for delivering electric vehicle charging points and maybe electric heating systems and solar PV. So we've had a report from the Energy Catapult Organisation, which is a government-funded research body, and they're looking to do an asset review that will identify things like suitable places for EV charging infrastructure that can hit the largest number of people if you cite them correctly. And also do an assessment of available capacity on roofs for solar panels. So if you've got a kind of south-facing roof, identifying where those properties and also business locations are. So they're the kind of projects that we're looking to deliver over the next 12 months as part of the new budget year. So yeah, so that's the report. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much indeed, Dan. I, for myself, I'm quite interested in page 41 on your cargo bike last-mile project. I'm sure many members have problems in their town centre with HGVs trying to enter the high street to do deliveries. So I'd be really pleased to have an update in the future on that scheme, particularly if it works well in Lincoln. I'm now going to open up to members of the committee to comment on this item. Are there any comments for members? Councillor Baxter?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you again, Dan, for the report. Could you say something about the ESCO, the Energy Services Company, which is mentioned at the bottom or in the table at the bottom of page 40? Will there be a financial saving to the council as a result of setting this up? I don't know if you need to explain it a little bit for members to ensure that we're all thinking about the same vision of an energy services company. On the schools, will you be working with secondary schools or primary schools or neither or both? And certainly welcome working with children in schools, whether it's through drama or anything else. But I think drama is particularly good. Are you thinking of a theatre and education project or something more complicated? I mean, I haven't said that. I welcome the report. It's great to see that we're making some progress in this area. On biodiversity, the biodiversity act, biodiversity net gain analysis, which is the last box on page 40, sounds a little bit, maybe it's unfair, but it sounds a little bit St. Humphrey. The first sentence says the process has begun. The second sentence says the process will be introduced. The third sentence says the project will look at how the process will be introduced. But nowhere does it actually say what or where we're expecting anything to happen. The asset review, the local, the local energy asset review, can you say anything about the incinerator? Because as I understand it, we send all our waste to the, I don't know if we call it an incinerator, but the energy for waste. We send all our waste to the energy from waste plant, and we generate lots of electricity, which is great. But last time, I understood that we were throwing a lot of heat into the atmosphere because we didn't have a customer for the heat. Have we made any progress on finding a better way to use the heat that we are currently throwing into the atmosphere? And with regard to the Environment Act and reporting on it, is there any update yet to the conversation we had at the last full council about putting something into council reports to ensure that the impact on climate change would be taken notice of? At the time, the council decided not to adopt an extra paragraph in reports to look at the carbon change, climate change impact, because I think the Environment Act was going to solve the problem for us or tell us what to do. So is there any progress on that yet? Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Baxter. I do agree with you on the last paragraph on biodiversity. It does seem strange the way it's written. Dan, could you please explain that for me, please?
Yeah, I'll be happy to. Yeah, so I think the reason why it was written like that was we were still a bit unclear about how biodiversity net gain is going to be introduced. So I think the process has started by the passing of the Environment Act. And in that, the kind of, the development of the bill, there was discussion of how biodiversity net gain would be introduced. And the idea was that once the act was passed, that kind of fired a two-year starting pistol on when biodiversity net gain would be introduced. So from the passing of the act, there was then two years before it kind of goes live. And during that period, there'll be a number of public consultations. So as I mentioned before, there was a consultation that was launched last week from DEFRA on how biodiversity net gain will be implemented. So we're going through that document currently, and we expect to to give a Lincolnshire County Council response to that consultation exercise. So and it obviously covers multiple areas of council activity, so that there'll be the kind of property side of things for development of new projects. There's obviously the planning team within the county council, our sustainability and natural environment team. There's impact from there. So I think we'll all review that document and then have a group response to the consultation exercise. On the schools project, we are looking at a theatre in schools project, a theatre and education project. So we're looking at mainly to do primary schools, but we are also hoping to do some secondary schools as well from the maintained group of schools. On the energy from waste plant, there's currently a project underway where the council's got funding through the Heat Network Delivery Unit to do a study on the energy from waste plant and suitable nearby heat sources. the energy from waste plant and suitable nearby heat sources for that, that heat that comes from there. And I know that the, the company that operate the plant have also come forward with their own proposals for using that heat as well in various sort of environmental technology and, and kind of fuel generation processes. There are also obviously nearby business parks that could potentially use it. But I think it's the, the timing of it and the, of those developments and making sure that, you know, that the developers are fully aware that that, that heat is available. But yeah, there, there are certainly lots of opportunities. And I agree that it's a missed opportunity that it's currently being vented to atmosphere. So anything we can do on that would improve the environmental sustainability of the energy from waste plant.
Thank you, Dan. Councillor Baxter, I have your that response? Thank you. Are there any further questions for members? councillor Carrington?
Thank you. Just one quick one for Dan, if I may. And it refers again back to the biodiversity net gain analysis. I'm a little puzzled about this one, Dan. BNG is going to work in the context of the planning system. And as I'm sure you know, every planning application must be judged on its own individual merits against the development plan. The metrics by which BNG will be assessed are set out in the Environment Act, partly so far, and will be completed in the various statutory instruments that will in due course flow from the act. Given those two sets of circumstances, and given the importance of following proper planning law and guidance, I'm unclear as to how a further set of coordination is going to be either possible or lawful. And I wonder if you could clarify that for me?
Yeah. So what, what I was thinking of here was that not really to, to look at how we could get the most benefit from, from the process. So I think one of the issues is going to be of developers delivering the, the kind of ten percent upgrade on, on depending on the site where they're developing. And there've been some suggestions that these issues could be tackled on a wider basis. So if we have some, almost like the, the section one oh six money is now, it isn't all spent on the, the one site. So we could look at other areas around the county that are important biodiversity sites and use the money to enhance and develop those or enhance areas around those, those biodiversity sites. So, so I think that's, that's what we were looking at of how we could make it as smooth as possible. And it could almost be a, a kind of development opportunity where that if we can make this process as easy for developers as possible, then, you know, that, that's a development attraction, isn't it? So, so, you know, if we, if you've got those sites available, then, then biodiversity net gain can be a smooth process. So I think that's what, that's what we were thinking of as, you know, how can we get the best benefit for the county from the biodiversity net gain process? Because otherwise, we might end up with small scale interventions on a housing development site that don't actually add much to the, the total value of biodiversity in the county. But if we ident, enhance sites that are biodiversity sites already, then, then that does add significantly to the biodiversity value of the county.
Thank you, Dan. Are you happy with that response, councillor Carrington? Thank you. Any further questions for members? No. Thank you, Dan, very much indeed. That's been a very interesting update. You could, I look forward to a future update. I'm going to move now to the proposal, which is that I move that we note the detail highlighted in the report and request our support and comments as recorded. Are we all agreed? That's carried. Thank you very much indeed. I'm now going to move to the last item on the agenda. And we are exactly on time, twelve fifteen. Congratulations, which is item nine, the Environment and Economic Scrutiny Committee Work Programme. This item is on page forty three to forty seven of the agenda pack. This item enables the committee to comment on the content of the work programme. And this report will be presented by Kiera. Our scrutiny officer, Kiera.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The role of the work programme is to be reviewed at each meeting of the committee to ensure that its contents are still relevant and will add value to the work of the council and partners. Following today's discussion derived from items five, six and seven, I propose that the following items are added to the work programme. Foods waste collection in Lincolnshire, Lincolnshire carbon tool update in three months, Lincolnshire homeowner property floor resilience assistance scheme further update. I welcome any further suggestion on specific topics or areas for scrutiny additional to what was discussed today. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much indeed, Kiera. Are there any comments for members? councillor Baxter?
Thank you, Chair. I'm, I'm not sure if it's included in what, what was just said. But we mentioned the sustainable urban drainage systems and potentially other things that householders could do to prevent flooding occurring rather than to, to mitigate when flood is actually happening. I'm sure that Dan Clayton had a, an elegant way of saying that. But basically flood prevention through small householder actions rather than massive flood defences. And, and the second thing I wanted to ask for was, we've talked a lot about the Environment Act and its impact. Would it be possible to have a kind of general update on the various impacts of the Environment Act at some point? Thank you. That, that's what I would add. I look at the study visit Gibraltar Point. Are we going to the seaside for our May meeting?
I'm sorry, councillor Baxter, I couldn't hear exactly what you were saying on the last bit there. So could you please repeat yourself, please?
On the twenty fourth of May, the first item is study visit Gibraltar Point. Does that mean we're going to the seaside for the meeting?
You're quite correct. Any further comments from anyone?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to answer councillor Baxter's question, and thank you very much for the additional topics. I will definitely take them back for consideration and I will update you in the future and the members of the committee in terms of potential dates. It may not be in these, the next coming meeting also, but it will certainly be considered in the future. And also in regards to the study visit to Gibraltar Point, just to, to note here that that is the plan. However, we have to take into consideration any future restrictions that may come into play. Thank you.
Thank you very much indeed, Kiera. Chris Miller, are you online?
I am, Chairman. Good morning.
Good morning, Chris. Would you like briefly to explain a little bit about our, our potential visit to Gibraltar Point, what you intend to do at that process?
We thought it'd be a good opportunity. We were asked whether or not there was any potential opportunities to enable councillors to undertake a, a meeting outside of the normal convention of being in the council chamber. And we thought the opportunity at Gibraltar Point would lend itself to perhaps an update of how we are working with our partners at the Lincolnshire Wildlife Trust, who operate Gibraltar Point on a day to day basis. So that, that was the basic intention behind it, as well as having, you know, other agenda items to go along with it.
Thank you very much indeed, Chris. Thank you. I'm going to move to the proposal. I move that we note the report and approve the existing work programme as detailed in pages forty three to forty seven. Are we all agreed? Please raise your hand. That's carried unanimously. Thank you very much indeed. Exactly on time. So really pleased. May I thank members for their attendance today? May I thank